Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Good evening, members of the public. Before we commence the meeting, can I draw your attention to the fire regulations which are on the screen behind me? Also, please, could you make sure that all mobile phones are either switched off or at least switched to silent? Members of the public, can I please remind you that this is a meeting which is held in public? It is not a public meeting. Those of you who have been selected to speak may do so, but otherwise, please refrain from cheers, boos, or any other contributions. Councillors, could I remind you that you should limit your comments to four minutes, as per the standing orders, but at my discretion, this may be how extended, if necessary, to allow you to complete your remarks. The first item on the agenda is the minutes of the previous meeting. This meeting took place on the 7th of January. The minutes have been laid on the table for the last thirty minutes. Are you content that I sign these as a correct record of that meeting? Thank you very much. Just as a matter from that, I understand from the news today that two councillors are taking the department to a judicial review in relation to affordable houses for less than ten homes, so I wait to see what the outcome from that might be. Apologies for absence. Emma?
We have apologies from councillor Stella Anderson-Payne and Stephen Mulliner.
Thank you very much. Declarations of interest? Have members declared any interest before the meeting?
There's been one interest from councillor Nicola Lee in item A3, as the applicant is known to her. And also, Principal Planning Officer Paul Hardwick declares a disclosable pecuniary interest in items A1 and A2, and will leave the room whilst these are considered. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Emma. Do any other members have any councillor issue?
Thank you, I'm a member of Hayton Town Council.
Councillor Edwards? Questions from members of the public? Have there been any questions received from members of the public?
None received, chairman.
Thank you very much. Updates to government guidance or legislation since the last meeting?
There have been none in relation to the items on this agenda. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you very much. Councillors, it has been requested, and I have agreed, to change the order of the agenda so that the applications can be dealt with first, and items six and seven, the quarterly appeals and enforcement reports, will move to the end of the agenda. So, moving to agenda item eight, applications for planning permission. In the event of site inspections being necessary as a result of consideration of the applications at this meeting, these will be held on Tuesday the 3rd of March 2015, at a time to be agreed. Moving on to the planning applications. Six-two, items A1 and A2. Items A1 and A2 on pages twenty-three and seventy-one are in relation to the same site, and so will be presented together. The first application is the change of use from hotel (class C1) to school (class D1), together with the erection of extensions and alterations following demolition of a modern extension and associated works. The second application is listed building consent for the erection of extensions and alterations following demolition of a modern extension and associated works, and they are both in relation to the Undershore Hotel, Hindhead Road, Hindhead. Catherine, would you like to introduce the applications to the committee, please?
Thank you, chairman. I'm going to start, if that's all right. I'd like to start briefly by setting up the context for the application to assist members' assessment, and I will then hand over to Catherine Pearson, the case officer, who will take members through the proposal in more detail. Chairman, there are four key issues that I would particularly like to draw members' attention to, and they are listed on the screen there. Firstly, in relation to the planning history; second, in relation to the relevant national and local plan policy and legal tests in connection with these applications; thirdly, the role of English Heritage and the statutory amenity societies; and then fourthly, the requirement and circumstances for referral of the applications to the Secretary of State. As members are aware, Undershore is a Grade II listed building in Hindhead, and this listing reflects its association with the author, Sir Arthur Conan Doyle. And Catherine will describe the site and setting in more detail. The site has a complex planning history, and members will see that this is set out in the report at page thirty-two. Importantly, the council resolved previously to grant planning permission and listed building consent in 2010 for the conversion, extension, and alteration of the building to provide nine dwellings. Those decisions were subject to judicial review and were subsequently quashed by the High Court. However, they do remain a material consideration of some limited weight, as the most recent formal view of the council on the acceptability of development on this site. Critically, members will want to be clear that the issues raised by that court judgment have been addressed in the officer's assessment of the current scheme. In summary, the court held that the council had not properly considered the national policy test for the assessment of harm upon a heritage asset, including considering the optimum viable use for the building. That particularly meant that a concurrent application at that time for the conversion to a single-family dwelling should have been considered preferable to the application for nine dwellings, as that application resulted in less harm to the listed building. More recently, under reference WA 2014/1227, planning permission has been granted by the council for the change of use from hotel to educational use. The applicant for this permission is the same as for the current applications. That permission has not yet been formally implemented, and permission is therefore required, again, for the change of use of the building in relation to the current applications, because the lawful use currently remains that of a hotel. However, the previous permission is a material consideration, clearly for members to take into account, and it has effectively established the principle for a change of use to a school from the hotel use. The relevant national and local plan policy tests for the application are found within paragraphs one hundred and twenty-eight to one hundred and thirty-four of the NPPF, the National Planning Policy Framework, and the related practice guidance. These have been published since the previous High Court judgment, and they represent a material change in national planning policy position. However, the thrust of the guidance is the same, and the practice guide to the form of PPS V remains extant. Officers are confident that their assessment of the applications takes into account the most recent and relevant policy and is founded on a sound legal basis. The statutory test for the assessment of proposals affecting listed buildings is set out in sections sixteen and sixty-six of the Planning, Listed Buildings and Conservation Areas Act 1990. Members are advised that, following the recent Court of Appeal case, the Barnwell case, considerable importance and weight needs to be given by you to the desirability of preserving the listed building and its setting when carrying out the balancing exercise that affects such a building and its setting. And members should therefore approach the current applications on this basis. You'll see from the report that the officers conclude that the proposers would fail to preserve and therefore cause some harm to the special interests and significance of the building and its setting. Importantly, the NPPF advises that there are two possible degrees of harm in respect of heritage assets, substantial harm and then less than substantial harm. The officers conclude, taking into account the expert view of our heritage officer, that less than substantial harm will be caused in this instance by these proposals. The NPPF advises at paragraph one hundred and thirty-four that this harm should be weighed against the public benefits of the proposal, including the possibility of securing its optimum viable use. Taking into account the consideration of the court previously in relation to this issue, optimum viable use, we've had to look at this very carefully. The applicants have not explored the optimum viable use, and you'll see in the report that we've had to conclude that no adequate marketing has been carried out to demonstrate that the building could not be used for a single-family dwelling. However, officers have sought senior councillor's opinion on the application of this test and have in regard to the previous history. And councillor has advised, in his view, that the public benefits are not limited only to that factor, i.e. the optimum viable use. In other words, it's possible to take into account benefits of this scheme in weighing against the harm that doesn't necessarily include having considered the optimum viable use. Happy to respond to any questions on that, but that's pretty important, to members being confident that our case is robust, and that councillor has looked very carefully at the methodology that we're using.
Can we interrupt, then, Elizabeth?
Of course, certainly.
Councillor Edwards has a question.
Just to go back on that, you said we'd come back on that. When it was marketed, all right, I understand there was a number of offers, but they were very, very low because of the amount of work that was needed at that site to make the site viable for single occupation, as I understand it. So, what does that mean in terms of viable use? Because if it's been marketed and nobody wants to buy it because it's not viable, then what's the alternative? Can you explain that, please?
Yes, thank you, chairman. The marketing exercise has been set out in the report, and we've looked at it very carefully. Our conclusion, and that of actually consultants that we asked to look at the marketing evidence, is that the marketing was targeted around demonstrating that the loss of the hotel use could be acceptable. But in terms of demonstrating that it had been marketed effectively to ensure that there was not any interest in it being used as a single-family dwelling, that element of the marketing was not satisfactory. And we cannot come to the conclusion and advise you that that element has been satisfactorily exhausted, taking into account the analysis that we've carried out. Having said that, I think the key point that I've made reference to is that we want to give members assurance that this isn't the key point to take into account, that following councillor's opinion, that the benefits that you may wish to weigh into the balance against any harm caused do not necessarily have to include marketing for optimum viable use. There are a number of other benefits that have been put forward, and Catherine will set those out, they're in the report as well. And what we're recommending is it's those other benefits which you are able to take into account legally to weigh against the harm that is caused. Thank you, chairman. I'll just continue with a couple of other points. I think I've probably covered the point on benefits. I just wanted to move on to clarify the role of consultees. It is a statute of requirement for us to consult English Heritage and the amenity societies in relation to this type of application, this listed building application. And you will see that we have properly consulted the relevant bodies. You'll also see that English Heritage and the Victorian Society do object to the application and consider that harm will be substantial. Now, the council and the committee have a duty to take into account that advice, but ultimately, it's the council that is the decision-taker and must form the final conclusion as planning authority, taking into account the advice of its own experts. And as I said before, our own Historic Buildings Officer has been advising us closely on this matter, and he's here this evening to take your detailed questions, if you have any. But he has carefully considered the views of English Heritage and the other consultees, but he has concluded that the harm would not be substantial, it would be less than substantial. And that is quite important when it comes to the balancing exercise, that's a different set of circumstances for you to weigh into the balance. Finally, members are advised that if they are minded to grant consent for these applications, then in the light of the objection from English Heritage, the applications must be referred to the Secretary of State for consideration prior to consent being granted. And this could mean, as members are probably aware, that the Secretary of State could decide to determine the application himself, normally by way of a public inquiry with an appointed inspector, or he may decide not to do that and leave this matter for a local determination, and then we will be advised of that in due course. So, that is in the event of you resolving to grant consent. So I trust that background is helpful, and I'm now going to pass over to Catherine to take you through the plans and proposals in more detail. Thank you very much, chairman.
Thank you, chairman. The application's site is located here, outlined in red, to the east of the Hindhead Road. It's roughly naught point nine hectares in area. It rises from the south in a northerly direction and is sited just south of the Hindhead crossroads there. I'll just briefly take you through some photographs of the site, in case members are not familiar. This is the main elevation which faces you as you come down the driveway and into the site. This is the original part of the dwelling here. And on the end, on the eastern side here, there is a latter extension to the property that was added during its time as a hotel. This is the side elevation as you approach and contains the main entrance to the site. And this is the rear, heading up to the bank at the northern end of the site. There has in here been previously a kitchen extension, which, as you can see, has subsequently been demolished. Briefly then, just the elevations which reflect the commentary that I've just given to you. As we enter the property here, into the main part of the original parts of the dwelling, as it was, on the ground floor, the main living areas and the main hotel use areas were these areas here, towards the front of the building, and at the rear, what was formerly servants' areas and latterly used for the kitchen facilities to serve the hotel. The areas outlined in red are those extensions, so the kitchen extension which has subsequently disappeared, and the nineteen thirties extension here. Moving to the first floor, as you can see, a number of bedrooms. There have been some alterations from the original platform to facilitate the hotel layout, including things like bathrooms which have been inserted. The two principal bedrooms here were Sir Arthur Conan Doyle's bedroom and his wife Tuie's bedroom, interconnecting. On the second floor, this was obviously originally servants' accommodation, but has most recently been used as further hotel accommodation. This is the existing coach house, which is located to the north-west of the main building. Presently, it's used, or was formally used, as caretaker-coachman accommodation. The central garage area here currently has an open frontage, and the original stable here, still featuring the original stable stalls, is located in this part of the building. This is the proposed site plan, then. The area in grey here is the existing original part of the building, Undershore. The areas shown in the pink colour here are the proposed extensions and alterations, and there would also be alterations to provide car parking to the rear of the new extension here, and a turning circle with some additional parking along the bank as you approach the property. I'm now going to hand you over briefly to Sean Ricks, the council's Historic Buildings Officer, and he will just give you some details with regards to the internal alterations proposed to the original part of Undershore. Sean?
Thank you, chairman. This is a plan view of the historic building and the proposed extensions. This is a more detailed ground plan view of the historic building with the extensions to the north. The principal changes on this floor will involve the loss of a toilet in this area here. This had been a billiards room, so the toilet was provided there for the convenience of those using this room. The entrance hall, there will be a new opening in the wall of the entrance hall in order for access and communication to the reception area for the school. The principal staircase is remaining unaltered. The entrance hall will remain unaltered as it is today. It has been significantly altered with the removal of the dividing wall between the hallway and the dining room overlooking the garden. The double-height stained glass window will also remain unaltered, and the hall fireplace will be work undertaken to bring it back closer to it, as it was in Arthur Conan Doyle's time. There's more substantial alterations in the service end of the building here, where the historic kitchen and servants' rooms were. There will be some loss of the historic spatial arrangement and the arrangement of spaces in this area. This is a first-floor plan showing the historic building and the proposed extension, and then here's the more detailed view of the first floor. On the first floor, the significant alterations will be changes to the spatial layout of the children's bedroom and governess's bedroom. There will be the removal of dividing wall between these two rear rooms, and the removal of the stud walls. Yes, these walls, there's been some discussion about their provenance, but these will be removed, opening up this room here. The partition between the void above the hallway will be removed from the outside of the balustrade. Tuie's bedroom will remain unaltered, as will Arthur Conan Doyle's bedroom. There is substantial alterations to the area that houses the servant staircase from the first to the second floor, and also the housemaid's cupboard. There is a retention of some of the cupboards within that room, and also the retention of the Belfast sink. This is a plan of the second floor with the proposed link extension. I'll go back to that slide. There will be alterations on this floor, again, to open up spaces to allow for ease of access between rooms. This is the coach house, which is a separate detached building at the back of the site. The proposal is to block up the current opening into the coach house part of the building, and also to gain access directly into what had been the stables. The surviving stall divisions will be relocated, they will be kept in the space, but they will be placed up against an internal partition and against the exterior wall. And these are the elevations for the coach house, and you can see the glazed infill to the coach house.
Thank you, Sean, chairman. I will now go through the elevations for the proposed extension, and obviously the external alterations that that would result in. This is a view of the western elevation of the extension, so this is looking east across the entrance driveway. As you can see, outlined in grey here, is the form of the existing building, and the link extension, together with the main bulk of the extension, which would be at its biggest, approximately nineteen and a half by twenty-six metres long. This is then the rear of the building. As you can see, in this area where that kitchen extension previously has been demolished, this would be refurbished, there would be a new kitchen café extension here, with a glazed roof pitching up to eaves level, again, to allow light into the stained glass windows which would serve the ground floor and first floor. Here at this point, the drawing here isn't quite in perspective, because at this point the extension would turn away from the building, bringing you round to the back of the proposed extension. And this will be the end view of the extension viewed against the existing property, so that's looking north from standing down in the southern end of the site. So here, this is the link extension, which would link the historic original building to the newer extension. As you can see, it would feature a large amount of glazing, so as not to interrupt appreciation of this as a standalone original building. The extension would angle away from the building here, so this elevation would be legible as you see it there. And this is a perspective drawing provided by the applicant's architect, just to give you an idea of how the extension would appear, obviously in relation to the building that is there at the moment. If I can now refer members to your printed update sheet, you will note that there have been a number of further pieces of correspondence since the publication of the agenda. Firstly, attached at Annex One is the list entry for Undershore, which was missing off the original agenda report, and there is no Annex Two. Apologies for that. Oh, okay. You will see there have been a couple more consultation responses, the county archaeological officer, no further comments. There have been further comments received from English Heritage, who maintain their objection to the proposals on the basis of substantial harm. There have also been additional representations received, two letters raising objection, again, on the basis of substantial harm caused, and also with regards to the safety of the proposed access alterations, which would be part of this proposal. There have also been two letters of support received, expressing support with regards to the benefits of the scheme in terms of the provision of school places for children with special needs, and they come from the county council. Officers have had regard to these objections, and have also had regard to the expert view of the Historic Buildings Officer. Officers maintain, on the basis of advice from councillor, that their approach to the application is legally sound, and that the proposals would result in less than substantial harm, and therefore, members are advised that they should be looking to apply the test of paragraph one three four of the NPPF. With regards to the concerns raised about the access arrangements, officers have forwarded on those concerns to the County Highway Authority as the technical expert to whom officers refer. The County Highway Authority maintains that the proposals would not result in any detrimental harm to highway safety. They have been thoroughly assessed in that respect, and there are conditions recommended to ensure that parking arrangements on site are satisfactorily managed. There is an additional condition recommended with regards to the airing shed on site, which is a historic feature on the site, and the condition requires that details of that building, the dismantling and re-erection of it elsewhere on site, be submitted to the local authority for consideration prior to commencement. There are a couple of further late comments that have been received. They are from the Victorian Society and Ancient Monument Societies, both of whom maintain their objection on the basis of substantial harm. Those responses are in relation to the most recent set of amendments to the scheme, wherein some of the internal arrangements and alterations to the school were removed. Those responses from the amenity societies indicate that these alterations do not change their position, they still object to the proposals. I will now take members through the main determining issues for each application. Application sixteen five five is the planning application. Application sixteen five five is the planning application for the proposals. The matters of principle and technical judgment are obviously the principle of development, the change of use which has already been established, the planning history which Elizabeth set out to you, and the differences with the previous proposal, and the matters relating to the highways, access and parking considerations. Members are being asked to exercise their judgment with regards to the loss of the existing use, the suitability of the proposed use, and the impact that that would have on the character and setting of the listed building and designated heritage asset. Application one six five six is the list of building consent application, which is required for the internal alterations and the demolition of the existing extension on site. Again, the principle of development, the change of use has been established, and the planning history is relevant. Again, members are being asked to exercise their judgment with regards to the impact on the character and setting of the listed building, and the harm to the significance of it. Elizabeth has set out to you that the site has a long and complicated planning history, which I'm sure you're all familiar with. Members will recall back in September the planning application for the change of use, and that is extant. The current proposals are materially different because they include internal alterations, the demolition of the extension, and the erection of a new extension. The proposals have been scrutinised in depth by the council's expert, who is of the view that the proposals would result in less than substantial harm. It is recognised that this is at odds with English Heritage. However, the significance of Undershore lies in its association with Arthur Conan Doyle, and not in its architectural merit. This is confirmed in the listing reports. The internal alterations to the original building would be primarily related to the service areas of the building, which have little specific reference to Conan Doyle, and would in the view of officers not be substantially harmful. The alterations to the exterior grounds of the building, which include the stable building and the airing shed on site, conditions are recommended to ensure that the significance of those buildings, the understanding of those buildings can be maintained. With regards to the extension proposed and the impact upon the setting, officers acknowledge that it would be visible, and it would compete to a degree with the original house. However, it would be sighted and designed so as not to obliterate the setting, as has been suggested, and any harm would in the view of officers be less than substantial. Members, you're therefore directed to paragraph 134 of the MPPF, which outlines that such harm, less than substantial harm, should be weighed against the public benefits of the proposal. In this case, the proposal is for a school for children with special needs at the higher end of the autistic spectrum. Steppingstone Schools already has a site in Hindhead, and the proposed school would provide more places at that school. The school and its work is supported by the county council, who do send children to that school, even though it is a private school. The proposal would also create more jobs in the area, and therefore has economic benefits which members must bear in mind. On that basis, it is recommended that planning permission be granted. The planning permission would be subject to a section 106 agreement, and following the advice of Council, members are advised that given the weight of the benefits of the scheme, which would need to be attached to any permission granted, a legal agreement would provide the most appropriate mechanism for securing those benefits in the long term to outweigh that harm. The recommendations are therefore, as set out on the printed update sheet, that planning permission be granted and listed building consent be granted. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much, officers, particularly Catherine. Okay. Members are aware that this is an application which is subject to public speaking, so we now will have that. And I understand that those of you who have been selected to speak have had the procedures explained to you. So can I call on the objector, Mr Gibson, please? Good evening, Mr Gibson.
Good evening.
As this is two applications, the time allotted has been extended to six minutes. You will receive a warning prior to the end of your time, but please don't run over.
I base my arguments largely on the points of English Heritage in their recent correspondence to you, which are absolutely vital, namely that these proposals would cause substantial harm to the significance of Undershore. The key issues are the question of optimum viable use, and also the harmful alterations and additions to the listed building. With regard to the optimum viable use, sustainable development in relation to a listed building means putting them to use in ways that are both economically viable and compatible with their conservation. The PPS Five Practice Guide states, 'If there are a range of alternative ways in which an asset could viably be used, the optimum use is the one that causes the least harm to the significance of the asset.' Undershore actually set the principal case law on the question of optimum viable use through the High Court case of 2012. Mr Justice Cranston said, 'In my view, if one of the alternatives would secure the optimum viable use, and another only a viable use, not only does that have to be taken into account in determining an application, but it provides a compelling basis for refusing permission for the non-optimum viable proposal.' The question that's been asked is whether the judge was comparing only the nine houses scheme with Mr Norris's single dwelling application, or if he was making a wider point to make, 'It makes no practical difference if the former...' If the former, the council must now compare the small school use for Undershore, which is an existing planning permission, with the large school proposed, and ask which is the optimum, i.e. less harmful of the two. If the latter interpretation, the council must ask whether there is another realistic viable use to which the house should be put. And the judge was unequivocal in saying that this was as a dwelling, and resist other proposals. Either way, the unavoidable conclusion, in the opinion of English Heritage and others, is that the current proposals should be refused, planning permission and listed building consent. With regard to the harmful alterations and additions, there are several places within the home and stable where harmful changes are proposed. The council should be aware of the precedent they are setting by accepting this degree of change to a listed building as reasonable adjustment in excess of English Heritage's guidance. With regard to the proposed extension, English Heritage view that it would cause substantial harm to the significance of the listed building by adversely affecting its setting. Undershore would be utterly diminished by this proposal. These proposals would cause substantial harm to the significance of Undershore. NPPM double PF paragraph 133 states, 'Where a proposed development will lead to substantial harm to or total loss of the significance of a designated heritage asset, local planning authority should refuse consent unless it can be demonstrated that the substantial harm or loss is necessary to achieve substantial public benefits that outweigh that harm or loss. Your council has no evidence in the application that the substantial harm is in fact necessary. One, Undershore is no longer at risk. It is plain to see that the new owner is committed to its future as a school, and it is no longer the case that withholding permission, while a better scheme is negotiated, would put the listed building at risk of further decline. Two, no evidence has been provided of the demand for the additional places that the large school option would supply. Three, no evidence has been provided of the alternative designs that have been considered and rejected in the search to minimise harm to the significance of Undershore. Four, no evidence has been provided of the consideration of other sites in the Hindhead area on which to provide the additional places. All of these forms of evidence would be expected to be tested by the council in the exercises of its duty to have special regard to the desirability of preserving the building or its setting, or any features of special architectural or historic interest which it possesses under section 66 subsection 1 of the Planning Listed Buildings and Conservation Areas Act of 1990.' With regard to the very limited access, the Undershore Preservation Trust has recently commissioned the independent reports from two highly qualified and experienced consultant highway engineers. A copy of both reports was submitted to the council last week. These reports cast serious doubt on the safety of the applicant's proposed arrangements for vehicle and pedestrian access if Undershore was to become a school for sixty-four plus pupils and growing. They recommend that the council not determine the applications on access alone until further necessary assessments and reports have been produced in relation to these concerns to assess whether the issues in these reports are in fact insurmountable, and the planning permission should be refused. Therefore, in conclusion, it is contended that applications sixteen fifty-five and sixteen fifty-six should be refused to allow for the revision in form and size of the proposed extension. To allow for further discussions with English Heritage on much more radical revised plans with the aim of reducing the amount of harm to the interior of the house and stable from substantial to less than substantial. Finally, an allowance must be made for an appropriate period of consultation by the statutory consultees and others of at least twenty-one days on the revised plans and new reports. I note that the planning officer was recommending approval to these applications a week before the consultees' closing date, highly irregular and surely unlawful.
Thank you, Mr Gibson.
Thank you.
Could you turn off the microphone?
Yes.
Thank you. I now call on the representative from the town council, councillor Penny Bradley. Councillor Bradley, you also have six minutes.
Thank you, sorry. Good evening, Chairman, ladies and gentlemen. My name is councillor Penny Bradley, and I'm currently the mayor of Hazlemere. And I'm here tonight to convey to you the unanimous support of Hazlemere Town Council for the application for change of use for Undershore from hotel use C1 to school use D1, and for the associated building works. For many years now, we have followed the saga of possible buyers for the heritage building that is Undershore. During that time, we have observed, with some consternation, the relentless efforts made by Mr John Gibson and his supporters in their quest to secure Undershore as a Victorian Grade Two listed building with its connection to Sir Arthur Conan Doyle. However, to date, all their efforts have been in vain, and Undershore is now virtually derelict. One might be forgiven for thinking that Mr Gibson would sooner it fell down completely than see it resurrected and put to good use. We now have a wonderful proposal from the philanthropic DFN Foundation. Not only has the house been purchased for the totally worthwhile use of educating and nurturing young people with mild to moderate disabilities, Undershore will expand the facilities of the outstanding and much respected Steppingstone School. In addition, DFN have pledged to restore and maintain key historic features of the house, and also to return the grounds and the wonderful view so beloved by Sir Arthur to their former glory for the benefit of all future generations. Surely, Sir Arthur, as a doctor himself and his family, would be delighted to see his legacy being used in this way. As to the necessary changes, it could be argued persuasively today that converting a nineteenth century house with one bathroom and a small kitchen to a school is likely to involve far fewer changes to the layout than a conversion to a twenty-first century home with several bathrooms and large kitchen. The school facilities will be made available to the local community for use or hire outside school times, contributing further to the regeneration of Hindhead. Likewise, societies and followers of Sir Arthur and Sherlock Holmes and other aspects of the author's life would have similar access. The DFN Foundation are very proactive and wish to get on with the renovations and extensions now in order to halt the further deterioration of this wonderful building. We strongly support this application for the sympathetic restoration and use of a heritage asset which we believe represents the best solution for Undershore and the community. Hazlemere Town Council and councillor Nicky Barton work closely together, and she has advised the town council that Surrey County Council has a duty of care to find appropriate educational placements for young people with special educational, physical and emotional needs. It is increasingly difficult to find places for Surrey's vulnerable children in local schools that offer both high quality and good value for money like Steppingstones. The increased numbers that the new premises would offer would be most welcome. Hazlemere Town Council urge Waverley Planning Committee to have the wisdom and the vision to approve this application for change of use, and further to approve building works necessary to secure the future of Undershore. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Bradley. Now supporters, Mr Forbes Dixon and Mr Bandos. Could I remind you, gentlemen, that your six minutes is to be split between you?
Good evening, members. We obtained planning consent for the change of use of Undershore from a hotel to a school use, and have subsequently discharged the relevant conditions, and restoration work has commenced on site as per the consent. Demand for places at the school is very high, and the extension provides the essential facilities we need, including a school hall, hydrotherapy pool, modern classrooms, lift system and toilet facilities. This arrangement will ensure that the existing layout of Undershore can remain virtually intact. Wherever possible, it is intended to revert back to the original floor plan of Undershore, as it was when Arthur Conan Doyle lived at the property. This scheme has been designed by architects with considerable experience of listed buildings. Extensive pre-application discussions with the council officers took place, and the advice has informed the proposed design. We have met with English Heritage, including site visits, amending our designs to meet their concerns. This has significantly delayed our application. Their response has proved negative and contradicts their own recent listing report, and importantly, the Secretary of State's conclusion on the upgrade appeal, which states, 'Undershore must be assessed on its own architecture and historic merits.' Taken in consideration with the lack of the building's architectural interest, Doyle's standing as a writer does not raise the interest of Undershore above the special required for a Grade Two listing. We concur with your Historic Building Officers' assessment of the proposal and your officers' recommendation that the proposal should be approved, as it will not cause substantial harm to the listed building. We note the third party objections on highway grounds. A detailed transport assessment accompanied the planning application, and concludes that the proposal will not have a detrimental impact on the local highway network, nor compromise highway safety. The county highways engineer concurs with our consultants' findings. Members will note that the scheme is supported by Surrey County Council's education director, who has stated that Steppingstones provides high quality places. The county council would positively welcome its expansion as a local provision, as something that would provide a real benefit to residents of Surrey. Surrey County Council's cabinet member for schools has also stated that the proposal will bring considerable benefits for those young people and the wider community at a time when the local authority has been pressed to provide additional settings for children with a variety of learning difficulties. My client has stated publicly on many occasions that access to Undershore and its facilities will be provided to the wider public when the facilities are not in use by the school. We do not, however, consider it appropriate to control such access via section 106 legal agreement. This will yet again delay the implementation of works on site, add to my client's costs, and deny access to students who urgently need these facilities. A more appropriate and straightforward method of ensuring public access to Undershore is to deal with this matter via a planning condition. The committee report contains a number of planning conditions, and there is no reason why public access cannot be secured in this way. why public access cannot be secured in this way. We very much hope that you will support your officers' recommendation and approve this exceptional scheme for Undershore, albeit without the said section one and six agreement. Thank you.
Good evening, councillors. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of my foundation as a governor of Steppingstone School and, most importantly, on behalf of my son Charlie and all the other children whose lives have been totally transformed by attending this extraordinary school founded ten years ago by Larry Sullivan. My wife and I looked at over thirty schools in the south before we found Steppingstone's, the only school that fully met Charlie's complex needs. The school currently operates from a converted church site with forty students but is completely full and the proximity of Undershore to our existing Tower Road site made it the only viable choice to allow the much-needed expansion of the school. At Undershore, we are determined to build on Steppingstone's solid foundations to create a truly outstanding special school which shines out as a role model for others to follow. We will give full access to the local community and to Conan Doyle enthusiasts so they can enjoy the facilities and the heritage at Undershore that wouldn't be possible if it was a private house. At no cost to the public purse, the DFN Foundation has committed five million pounds to fully preserve Undershore forever, a far cry from the previous nine years where it stood empty and was left to rot. In that time, not one person or organisation came forward with any credible plan or offered any committed finance to rescue this beautiful old house. As custodian of this Grade Two listed property, I will ensure that all works are completed with the greatest care and to the highest standard. I have taken expert advice from Waverley and from our architects and heritage specialists to ensure that all the listed features will continue to be enjoyed. We will deliver substantial public benefits and will actively promote Undershore as a community resource and will create local jobs to help regenerate the Hindhead area. We informed the local community about our plans through a very well-attended public meeting which gave unanimous support for our scheme and have received eight hundred and fifty letters of support for our planning applications. We also have the full support of Jeremy Hunt and Richard and Catherine Doyle, who stated today, 'Our great uncle Sir Arthur embraced change and will completely understand the need to improve and develop the site whilst appreciating the effort being made to retain original elements of the building. We hope that Waverley stand firm in support of Steppingstone's and do not bend to the outdated aspic-coated wishes of distant scholars. It would be grossly unfair to impose any conditions which would further delay our scheme or reduce its scale or facilities, which are the minimum requirements for it to function as a school.' I urge councillors to support this planning application so all our students, families, our community and Conan Doyle enthusiasts can enjoy Undershore for many years to come. Thank you very much.
Can you turn off the microphone? Members, oh, forest of fingers. I saw councillor Edwards first, so...
Just one quick question. The presentation by Mr Gibson, he said it would be unlawful. Are we happy that it is lawful? Can I ask for a legal opinion on that, please?
I believe Mr Gibson, sorry, chairman, yes, I believe Mr Gibson was referring to the question of the officers' recommendation in advance for all the consultees' comments. This is not an unusual event because we've made it subject to those consultees' comments and therefore if those consultees' comments had come in and given us a view that we would have to change our recommendation, then the officers could clearly have done so. Thank you, chairman.
Councillor Lee.
Thank you. I have to say I'm concerned that English Heritage's marks seem somewhat clouded on one side, perhaps by their perception of this mystery buyer who hasn't appeared over very many years. I'd first like to deal with TB issue. TB treatment by the sea or mountain regions was known as early as seventeen seventy-seven. Gilchrist suggested fresh air. The first US sanatorium opened eighteen fifty-six. Most sufferers came from inner-city crowded areas and that was why they were treated away from home and obviously TB changed when antibiotics were introduced in the fifties. We now know it was vitamin D, it was sunshine, it was nothing to do with whether you were treated at home by the sea and, you know, up in the mountains, it was to do with having the sun. And I think the various tents, sheds, buildings were simply various ways of making it possible for people to be outside even in the winter. So the claim that Undershore is particularly medically interesting is frankly spurious. But if we want to say that there is significance of Undershore as a recuperative place for medical recovery, if we think that's important, then I'd say, I've had several patients at Steppingstone's, they've had brain tumours, they've had cancer, brain injuries, autism, and I think its place as a sort of place of rehabilitation, recuperation, recovery for them is entirely appropriate. The Conan Doyle Association, I think we all know it's actually quite minor, it's ten years out of seventy-one, he wrote twelve books out of his sixty-five. Actually, according to the Open Plaque Society, which funny enough, it doesn't have a blue plaque, but places like South Norwood where he first published his Sherlock Holmes book, that's actually up for conversion to flats. After he remarried, he spent almost twenty years down in Wildersham, that's a care home. I think there's no doubt that it's Baker Street that is the address that is associated with Conan Doyle. I'm mystified about this concept of the optimum use being a private home. I'm not quite sure how that goes through as inevitable, I don't think it is, as has been mentioned, a private home would inevitably require changes for bathrooms and kitchens. There is no way that somebody's going to spend a million or more on a home and then have a pokey little kitchen out the back, it's just not going to happen. I think there's not much evidence that the finances are there to make it a sustainable private home, which is probably why a buyer hasn't come forward to do it. And I think certainly if we think that public access is important, well, clearly a school who can allow public access in the holidays is bound to be more sustainable and more likely to be involved and I think Steppingstone's has a good track record involving the community. If you look at private homes, the obvious one comes to mind is Tennyson's up on Blackdown, I wonder how many people have been there. Significant harms and changes, I think it's interesting that phrase with substantial or total loss and that gives you a clue what substantial harm means. I don't understand why we haven't seen a substantial benefit here. We have a virtually derelict building. If it stays on the market waiting for some mythical private buyer, it will probably be, you know, at the point where it has to be demolished. Most of the changes, as I understand it, in this planning application internally are to do with restoring, repairing, renewing. I noticed English Heritage has a booklet available online with advice about refurbishing and enlarging listed schools and I have to say, most of this stuff they're doing, nibs, glass bits, having separate buildings of a different style so you can read them clearly differently, are all in English Heritage's own advice. So I'm not surprised to hear them say that they have taken expert architectural advice. Community public benefit, I think, again, it's been much understated. I mean, Hindhead is a new area, there's a lot of development going on there, I think the access to community facilities at this place would be fantastic. I think that we just simply can't underestimate the work that Steppingstone's does. We've heard how rare and difficult these places are. Anybody who's sat on planning for more than a couple of months knows the concept that there are just sites coming out of our ears where these things can be done, well, no, it's nonsense. But actually, I think a school enables things like, you know, a hall which can be used as a visitor's centre can be used for drama, actually allows potentially, to my mind, more uses which are in keeping with Conan Doyle than others. And lastly, the traffic engineer, I don't think they're independent, one was a tunnel engineer, the other is an odd thing where it's been purposed by somebody who's an amateur dramatics chap from Reading who's playing in a Sherlock Holmes play at the moment, but I'm sure he probably is also a good highways engineer. So I personally think it would be a travesty if this application wasn't approved. Thank you.
Can I say an indication to all the speakers? Sir Asher Wood?
Thank you very much, chairman. Could I crave your indulgence already because if public speaking is allowed double the time, I would certainly like to be considered in that vein. I first went to Steppingstone School about twelve, thirteen years ago, a Grade Two listed building, Larry Sullivan said this is going to be a school. I did wonder about what he was really thinking about, but he produced a school, six pupils started, they're now forty, it's full. This is the limit set by Department of Education. There is a pressing need to expand as well as develop new services. This is an outstanding special needs school and a leader in the south of England or more. Just refer to a couple of letters that are on the agenda, but Peter John Wilkinson, the Assistant Director of School and Learning at Surrey County Council, stated, 'Steppingstone's an independent school, provides children the age of five to eighteen. Surrey has placed a number of children on the school and an inspection by Osted found that it was an outstanding quality overall.' And I think if you look at the public gallery, not a sound there, that demonstrates what the school is doing for those young people. He also points out that in his experience as senior or chief officer of five local authorities with responsibility for education provision, Steppingstone's is quite exceptional and provides high-quality places at a cost broadly equal to local authority provision and the county council would positively welcome its expansion. It's a local provision, it's something that provides a real benefit to the citizens of Surrey and south of England. And another comment from the cabinet member, 'I believe that the proposed new modern-day school facilities with disabled access provide high-quality care and education for young people with a range of special education needs, including autism, will bring considerable benefits for those young people and a wider community at a time when the local authority is being pressed to provide additional settings for children with a variety of learning difficulties. The planned employment training centre for the eighteen-to-twenty-five-year-olds will, I believe, be particularly valuable as new legislation covering special needs education and disabilities was introduced last year, which will require the local authority to consider appropriate placements for those young people up to the age of twenty-five.' Conan Doyle left Undershore in nineteen oh six, his ownership continued until the twenties, when it became a hotel, and in the thirties, a sad, jerry-built extension was added. Didn't improve it at all. Changes were made to provide bathrooms, fireproof doors were added, et cetera. Nobody's explained to me what the suicide door on the third floor is all about. The house is in a sad state, a very sad state. Hindhead together, when it existed, tried to interest others in Undershore. The National Trust were asked to look at it and they said, 'No, thank you, not big enough, doesn't have enough interest and wouldn't provide the necessary bottom-line figures.' We also tried to get people connected with the Conan Doyle Society. We pointed out where money was, in Japan, in Dallas-Fort Worth, in Canada and other things, and nothing really came of it. And what my colleague has just said about Undershore is absolutely right. Tell me the value of the house. What is the value? Only one person will know and he is the person who pays the cheque. Today, at eleven thirty, I met someone else at the Royal Parade in Hindhead who had put in an offer. He's not even mentioned. The house, under the application, will be restored and maintained. English Heritage have floor plans that were not accurate, that really is surprising to me, but they've accepted the plans as they are now and they acknowledge that the alterations, particularly on the second floor, are not as harmful as originally. There's a hotel and restaurant access from the A3, a major trunk road at the time, which I suspect not so different to what we'll anticipate daily numbers. Surrey County Council okayed it. The airing hut, won't make too many comments about that, but the bricks and mortar under it weren't there when Conan Doyle was there. It's rotting, hardly surprising, is it? The DFN Foundation has already demonstrated the care and consideration for their neighbours. They're not going to have a hammer, a hydraulic hammer for piling, they're going to have a rather softer, more gentle system at great expense that will lower piles into the ground. Kind to their neighbours, they certainly are. The summary of benefits for the public are extensive and should be accepted gratefully by this authority and the people of the area. I'm not going to go into them, that just takes too long. But can I just finish again with saying, Richard John Francis Doyle, the great nephew of Conan Doyle, said publicly on the BBC, 'I do not believe that Undershore should be preserved in aspic but lived in and laughed in. I do believe that my great uncle embraced change and always had an interest in education, improving the mind. If it's possible for some of this magical, special building to become the heart of a new school that contributes to the thriving community of Hindhead, then I would be very happy. If then this school could work with the Doyleian and Sherlockian community to offer open days and writers' workshops during the holidays, I would be overjoyed, they've already have. However, I think the final choice should not rest with scholars or the family but with the good people of Hindhead.' Thank you, chairman.
Thank you, councillor Asher Wood. Any other comments? Councillor Adams?
Thank you, chairman. I've listened to what everybody's said, obviously I've read the papers earlier, and I'm delighted that Steppingstone's have bought this property. I recognise the value that it's going to give to disabled children and I recognise the value it's going to give to the community. However, I am very concerned that we haven't got natural English heritage on board. I think that's a very serious factor. I think that it's quite obvious, if you look at the map there, that the primary focus of people entering the site will be the new extension. And I'm disappointed that the new extension has not been set back a bit further and that discussions with English Heritage have foundered. I think that when they are suggesting that it is providing substantial harm, I think we should take more notice of that. After all, they are the national organisation which has been set up to take care of listed and other buildings of significance to the country, whatever you think of Conan Doyle, that is the opinion of English Heritage. I would like to see this application deferred and more discussions with English Heritage to come back with an agreed position. I feel that if that is not going to go ahead, then I would refuse this application purely on the fact that English Heritage suggests that substantial harm will be done. I don't have a problem with the entrance, I think that's been settled. I like the conversion of the coach house, in fact, I like a lot of the support that has been done to the preservation of the main building. But I do think that the extension, as it is currently designed, is overbearing and totally dominates the old house and I think that the comment of English Heritage, we should make more effort to bring them on board. Thank you, chairman.
Councillor Edwards?
Thank you, chairman. To a certain extent, I actually agree with my colleague, councillor Adams, but it's very finely balanced here. Can we have a, can I, can you get up on the screen again, please? The southeast elevation. Yeah, that's the one, yeah. Right. Because, can we also have a look at the south elevation, is that possible? That's it, yeah. Looking at that elevation, it does make a difference in terms of, it separates the main part of the house from the extension, which is a big plus in my opinion. It actually improves the look of the building. I was there this morning on a site visit... I was there this morning on a site visit with the officers and I think that's a massive Notwithstanding that, I was, at the last application in two thousand and ten, I was the only councillor that voted against that application because I thought it was cultural homicide at that time. But this time, I think I'm swayed in favour of the application. Having visited the site and seen the state of the building and what work is being done, I think it will be a great benefit to the community and I'm swayed in favour of the school. I think it will be a very worthwhile development and I think as a councillor, we should support it. Thank you.
councillor King?
Thank you very much indeed, Chairman. Councillor Lee and councillor Isherwood have both mentioned the school and various other than the medical aspect of the dwelling, and I'm not going to go there. But I will pick up on councillor Edwards and councillor Adams' point, actually about the building. I think that the demolition of this, the present modern extension, which as councillor Isherwood said, is an old jerry-built building, is a jolly good thing. It adds nothing to the original building whatsoever, it does not enhance it. The proposed modern extension, the one that you see there on that side anyway, is a great imaginative and in keeping with the outline of the original building. And in my view, it enhances the original unremarkable architecture of the original building. Oh, that's the slide I wanted to see. I think it very much outlines the form of the original building and I think it's a great modern enhancement. I think it actually, rather than dominating the original building, I think it throws it up into quite considerable relief and I'm happy to support this. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hess.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. It seems to me that but for the association with Conan Doyle, this house would have been, or the initial planning application would have been passed without so much as the batting of an eyelid. Which makes it so, or such a shame, that the association with Conan Doyle, of which so much has been made, has generated so little, in fact, less than little, no response or support from this apparent global Conan Doyle community. And if I can just make one more point to add to what, the richness of detail that has been offered up to us by the other members of this council. If we were to do a benefits comparison between what is on the table for us to approve tonight and the alternative, which is to reject it in the hope that it may become a single dwelling at some point in the future, I would say the list of benefits, we've heard of how much the community will win from the Steppingstones proposal. And it seems ludicrous to have that weighed in the balance against use of Undershore as a possible single dwelling. And indeed, it'll only have a chance of becoming a single dwelling if it survives long enough. And on its current trajectory, the place is falling down and has consistently failed to attract any single serious bid. So I think there are absolutely no logical, emotional or practical grounds on which we can possibly reject the Steppingstones application. Thank you.
Any further comments? No?
Thank you for letting me come back, Chairman. The applicant has made a number of suggestions. Reference the one oh six agreements. We feel the matter could easily be settled, they say, by condition and a section one oh six agreement will only lead to delays in greater expense, both in legal fees, which is invariably considerable, and delays to work on site. These delays would go against, go on whilst the lawyers are now what should and should not go into the agreement. One oh six agreements are notoriously slow to be agreed with versions of the agreement going backwards and forwards between the applicant solicitor and local authorities solicitors. I just wonder if you care to comment on that, if the officers would give an opinion whether that is viable?
Thank you, Chairman. I think the headline for me is, actually, this is a matter of your judgment in the end. If you were to conclude you wanted to seek to secure the benefits, if you're minded to grant permission and consent, you could theoretically, I think, do it through planning condition. However, we thought very carefully about this. The advice to councils from government is that if you can use a condition, you should use a condition and not use a legal agreement, it should be your first preference. But as I said at the beginning of the meeting, we have taken councillors' advice in relation to the way we've approached this application. And I need to come back to the fact that the judgement you're making in terms of if you grant permission, you would be outweighing a very strong objection from the Victorian Society and English Heritage and even an identification of harm from our own offices. And you'll be outweighing that harm with an expectation of benefits which outweigh them being secured. And councillors' advice was that you should be probably using a legal agreement because that will mean the benefits are secured more reliably. And that you can therefore place greater weight on those benefits outweighing the harm because you're going to be able to achieve them more reliably, it's more enforceable, it gives you protection over securing them for at least five years before an applicant can actually make an application to vary the agreement and appeal. Now, on the face of it, you may think there's not going to be that sort of challenge, the applicants have made the offer and they will be in a position to provide it. But as planning authority, you do need to consider the possibility that perhaps they run into financial difficulties and don't want to provide them, they could appeal a condition, they could in fact be in breach of the condition and your powers of enforceability are in the end much less. So my recommendation is, and I think the lawyers would agree with me, of course, yes. Certainly, the advice we've been given by council is it's probably beneficial to rely on a legal agreement in this instance, but I will ask Trevor to...
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, and thank you, Elizabeth. Yes, I think I'd just like to add a couple of practical considerations which are to try and reassure everybody. Firstly, I can reassure you that you know the importance of this scheme and the need for speed and we will do all in our power to make sure that there isn't any delay caused by the Borough Council in terms of the legal side, and I've got some influence in that particular area. To ensure that. The other practical consideration is that the Secretary of State is going to have to look at this. And so you actually, there will be a window for us to draw up that one oh six while the Secretary of State is looking at this particular matter. Hopefully that will reassure the applicants and yourselves, Chairman.
Thank you very much. councillor Inchmal.
Thank you, Chairman. Just, I won't add too much to what my colleagues have already said, but I also went on the site visit this morning and it is a truly unremarkable building in my view and nothing in it shouts Conan Doyle at me, apart from the stained glass window, which of course is to be restored and preserved. The personality of an individual is stamped on a house, not by the layout, but by what they put inside it. The paintings on the wall, the decoration, furniture. And finally, any private buyer who, knowing the history of these planning applications, committed himself to a battle with English Heritage would have to be simply out of his mind.
Okay, shall we move to determine this? Right, although we have dealt with both of these applications together, we need to deal with the recommendations separately. So firstly, the planning application two oh one four sixteen fifty five. Subject to the applicant entering into an S one oh six agreement, securing appropriate public, social, community access to the school facilities, referral to the Secretary of State and consideration of views from outstanding consultees, permission be granted, subject to the conditions one to eleven on pages sixty-six to sixty-eight and informatives one to seven on page sixty-nine. May I have those in favour of recommendation to grant?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
And those against?
One.
Okay, that is granted and subject, of course, to the Secretary of State. So we move on to the second application, two oh one four sixteen fifty six. Subject to referral to the Secretary of State and consideration of the views from outstanding consultees, consent be granted, subject to conditions one to fifteen on pages one hundred and three to one hundred and seven of the agenda and the additional condition sixteen in the update sheet. May I have those in favour of the recommendation to grant?
Okay, that's eight.
And against? One against, okay, that is agreed, members. Thank you very much. What did I say about public meetings? Well, hold on a second while members of the public leave. Has councillor Lee left or is she coming back? Oh, right, thank you. It's not, I thought it was non-buccunary, so she didn't need to leave, but... We'll go and check. It's all right, Emma's going. I'd like to progress, but I've lost my secretary now. Well, let's get on, we don't really need Emma for the beginning of this. Item A three, page one oh nine of the agenda, is the outline application for the erection of two dwellings following demolition of existing building with all matters reserved at nineteen St Christopher's Road, Hazelmead. Claire, would you like to introduce?
Thank you, Chairman. The application site measures naught point naught two hectares and is located on a corner plot to the west of St Christopher's Road and to the north of the access with Meadow Vale. The property comprises a three-storey gabled end building which is currently vacant. The lower ground floor is at the same level as the properties on Meadow Vale, the ground floor is at the same level as the properties on St Christopher's Road and the first floor is within the roof. The property was previously in a commercial use as a costume hire shop. The proposal seeks outline permission for the erection of two two-bedroom dwellings which would be semi-detached with all matters reserved for future consideration. The site area has changed since the original application referenced WA two thousand and thirteen stroke one nine one three. The site plan is there for that application with a loss of a parking space to the west side. So this was the original application and you can see from the new plan that that area is now omitted. It should be noted that land has also been subsequently obtained to the north of the site, in this area here, which does not form part of the current application. The indicative details suggest that the eaves and ridge heights would be one point two metres higher than the existing building and the footprint would occupy the same as the existing building. Four parking spaces would be provided, three on the existing parking space to the rear and one on the frontage. A small amenity space would be provided for each dwelling to the sides of the new building. As can be seen from the above, having regard to the reduction in size of the plot in comparison with planning application WA stroke two thousand and thirteen stroke one nine zero one, one parking space has moved to the front of the site. These are the photographs of the site. So this is the front east elevation, that's the street scene continued, the south elevation, the rear west elevation and the rear north elevation. Members will be aware of the updates to the report listed on the update sheet which relate to an additional letter of representation and an additional letter of support from the applicant dated the thirty first of January two thousand and fifteen. Post the production of the update sheet, a further email of amplification was received on the third of February. The email contained a copy of a letter from the Environment Agency dated the twenty fourth of August two thousand and ten confirming the completion of culvert replacement works on St Christopher's Road. The letter confirms that the new concrete pipe was one thousand and fifty millimetres in diameter and that it replaced a brick arch culvert of poor structural condition. So on that plan, you can see number nineteen is here, this being the west elevation. This was the original culvert and it was replaced by this section here. The new pipe replaced a brick arch culvert of poor structural condition. The Environment Agency states that the design and construction of the culvert is expected to reduce the likelihood of the previously observed mechanism of flooding in this area. An attached plan shows the location of the new culvert and these are the attached photos showing the works being undertaken. The site is within the developed area of Hazelmead, wherein the principal development is acceptable. It is material that the principal replacement building containing two dwellings was accepted under a refused outline application WA stroke two thousand and thirteen stroke one nine zero one. There's been no change in planning or site circumstances since that decision was made, with the exception of the loss of that small area to the west of the site. The previous reasons for refusal raised under WA stroke two thousand and thirteen stroke one nine zero one related to ecological surveys and the culverted watercourse which is located to the west of the site and these have been overcome under the current application. The council's estates and evaluation manager is satisfied that based on the marketing information submitted, the loss of the existing shop could be supported. Officers are satisfied that the... Officers are satisfied that the site could support a marginally higher building, and that the proposal would have no significant impact on neighbouring amenity, subject to detail of the design to be submitted at the reserve matters stage. The proposal would have no significant impact upon the special protection areas, drainage or flooding, and appropriate mitigation could be provided to support the loss of the backroost. The proposal is therefore considered to be acceptable in principle, and the recommendation is that outline permission be granted, subject to conditions as set out on page one hundred and thirty of the agenda. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. This item is subject to public speaking, but we've had nobody wants to speak, so, members, councillor King.
Thank you very much indeed, Chairman. First of all, I'd like to say I'm really grateful to officers for the work they've done in sorting this report out, and actually clarifying all the issues, and for the photographs and the plan of the culvert, because I think they are very material. But I've just still got one question. On page one hundred and thirteen, car park space number four is still shown on that corner there. I have real concerns about that, I think, and I would certainly not park my car there, certainly not on the day the dustbins are being emptied, or anyone's got a large lorry coming round there, because likely to have been demolished. I just wondered if there was any merit in it being moved further forward, it just seems to me to be a really dangerous thing to do. Thank you.
Are the speakers?
Thank you very much. We, of course, heard quite a lot about this last time, so probably don't need to go through it all again, but I'm very pleased that everything has been clarified, particularly the culvert, and seeing the culvert, I can remember it flooding on a number of occasions. Once, I think, in nineteen sixty-eight, when they found a body up there, but...
I'm glad to see that there's a much better culvert there now.[717.43][717.43](LAUGHTER).
Carry the body on to somebody else's property. Councillor Edwards?
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, my shop flooded before they did the culvert, and ever since it's been fine, and I think this is a very acceptable scheme. Thank you.
Paul, do you wish to make a comment?
Yes, I'd like to come back to the question raised by councillor, councillor King, about the position of the parking space number four. It's worth noting that this application is an outline, with all matters reserved, but what we could do as part of maybe a condition to condition the, maybe for details to be submitted of the particular parking space on-site, as part of this permission, if that would address your concerns.
Thank you, Chairman. If I could just finish that one off, I'd be really grateful, because actually it is a community safety issue, and I am concerned about it. Thank you.
Councillor Adams?
Thank you, Chairman. I note, as it was stated by the officers, that this would support marginally additional height. On the other, what is marginal, I think the issue would be mainly the impact on number twenty-one, but I wonder if, again, we could add a condition which defined what we mean by marginal.
Councillor Edwards, you wanted to come back on something?
Yeah, just coming back on the car park space, my colleague mentioned, that means, I think we do need some amenity space there, and to get access to that car park space which would be on the border of our number twenty-one, would mean a loss of amenity space, so I understand why they put it there, but, I mean, it's down to them at the end of the day, I think.
Any officer have a comment on the car park? And on councillor Adams?
Yes.
At that roof height?
Yeah, the, again, it's worth stressing the application is an outline, and the plan you have before it turns with the street scene plan is really indicative. Details of layout and scale and height would have to be decided at the detailed stage. So, and then we'd have to assess, again, impacts in terms of neighbours, street scene. What we're saying, they're indicating they can accommodate two dwellings within an envelope of that sort of size, building and that height, so, again, that can be controlled at the detailed stage.
Councillor Adams, would you like to come back?
Just come back on that one. Yes, but to help the decision, perhaps a guidance on the height would actually save time when it came to the detailed stage.
Any other comments?
I take the point, Chairman, but I think the whole point of an outline is to establish the principle. They're not here to ask your opinion for the final version of the height and scale, and to be honest, to impose that at this stage is probably unreasonable. So I think you need to be assured that you would have full control over the scale, but it is a reserve matter. So if they came forward with details at reserve matters that you didn't like, it would be fully within your gift, having regard to the reserve matters that have been proposed, to resist it at that stage if it wasn't acceptable. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay, I'm being advised from my right to ask members about the extra condition related to car parking space. Do I need to do that, or is that not subject to detailed planning application later on?
Thank you, Chairman. The condition that Paul Harwick referred to in relation to the parking space could be contributed at this stage, and it might be that members would like to hear some proposed wording on that before deciding if you want to include it. Yes, thank you, I might ask Paul to do that, thank you.
Do you need a minute, Paul?
It could go along the lines of, something like, prior to the commencement of development, the site layout plan submitted should provide details of the proposed parking position of parking space number four on the site frontage. So it could be along those sort of lines, or to be submitted as part of the details at the reserve matter stage. So details to be submitted of the position of parking space number four to be agreed, something along those lines.
Right, and any more comments from members? We'll move on to the recommendation on page one hundred and thirty of the agenda. Permission be granted, subject to conditions one to ten and that extra condition, on page one hundred and thirty to thirteen, and informatives one to seven on pages one hundred and thirty-two to one hundred and thirty-three. May I have those in favour of recommendation to grant?
Yeah, that's unanimous.
Thank you very much, that's agreed then. Move on to the next. Can we rescue Dr Lee?
Right, this application is for the erection of four dwellings comprising two pairs of semi-detached houses with associated private gardens...
Sorry, we're just waiting for Dr Lee, because...
Oh, sorry.
If she misses part of it, she won't be able to vote. Okay, welcome back. We move on to the application on page one hundred and thirty-five of the agenda. The erection of four dwellings comprising two pairs of semi-detached houses with associated private gardens and parking spaces at Grassmere, Tilford Road, Hindhead. Louise, would you care to introduce this?
Thank you, Chair. Right, this is an application for the erection of four dwellings comprising two pairs of semi-detached houses with associated private gardens and parking spaces. An application was previously refused by members and allowed at appeal for three dwellings back in September two thousand and fourteen. Site is located on the eastern side of Tilford Road, close to the junction with Toward Road to the west. The surrounding area is residential in character, with mixed style of residential housing. The site is in the centre of this aerial photograph, which shows the surrounding residential These photographs show the bungalow which has recently been demolished from the site. These photographs show the site from Tilford Road following the recent demolition of the bungalow. These are the plans of the existing bungalow and garage which have been demolished. As you can see, the entrance to the site would be provided down from here from Tilford Road. Four dwellings would be provided and arranged as two pairs of semi-detached dwellings. Ten car parking spaces would be provided to the frontage in front of the properties. Private amenity space would be provided for each of the properties to the rear, and if members are minded to grant planning permission, soft landscaping would be secured by condition in front of the car parking area and surrounding the dwellings. An informal pedestrian crossing is to be provided and would be secured by condition at a location to be agreed with the county highway authority. The properties would be two-storey in scale with a height of seven point four metres. This slide shows the front and side elevations of units one and two. This slide shows the rear and side elevations of units one and two. A living room, kitchen diner, and WC would be provided at ground floor level, and three bedrooms and two bathrooms at first floor level. This slide shows the proposed elevations for plots three and four. There would also be two-story semi-detached properties, and this slide shows the front and side elevations. This slide shows the rear elevation and the side elevation of plots three and four. Plots three and four would have a similar layout to plots one and two, again providing a living room and kitchen diner at ground floor level, and three bedrooms and a bathroom at first floor level. This slide shows a perspective drawing from Tilford Road. This slide shows a comparison of the previously approved plans alongside the proposed layout plan. As you can see, the building positions have been altered slightly, and the footprint of the approved semi-detached properties has been reduced, whilst the footprint of the bungalow has been increased, and turned into two semi-detached properties. The access from Tilford Road has been moved from the edge of the site towards the centre, and the area for parking in front of the properties has been increased. The access to the site from the driveway to the south of the site is no longer proposed, and the hard standing to the rear and the detached garage is no longer proposed as part of the scheme. This slide shows the approved elevations at the top and the proposed at the rear. This table outlines the main differences between the approved scheme and the proposed scheme. The floor space created by the proposed scheme would be six square metres larger than the approved scheme. There would be an additional sixty square metres of hard standing for car parking proposed as part of the new scheme in comparison to the approved one. Both their buildings would have a slightly lower ridge height than those which have been approved, and the combined width of the buildings would have a slightly increased width than the approved scheme by one point zero six metres. Members need to be aware of some updates which have been received after the report and after the update report. Firstly, Natural England have had the opportunity to assess the habitats regulations assessment that has been submitted, and on this basis they have withdrawn their initial objection which was outlined in the initial report. In addition to this, an additional representation has been received from a neighbour which includes a copy of the legal covenants relating to the land. One of the covenants is that no more than one private dwelling house or bungalow with suitable outbuildings shall be erected on the land. However, as members will be aware, restrictive covenants are a legal matter which do not form a material planning consideration. Furthermore, the representation comments that the plans do not show the boundaries of the land parcel correctly. The applicant has signed the relevant certificates declaring that they have notified the relevant owners of the land, and land disputes are not a matter for the council. The issues of principle and technical judgment are therefore the principle of development, the planning history and differences with the previous proposal, the housing land supply, the housing mix and density, highways and parking issues, the effect on the SPAs, and biodiversity and compliance with the habitat regulations. The matters of judgment for members are the impact on visual amenity and the impact on residential amenity. The officer's recommendation is for approval, subject to the conditions outlined in the report. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. This item is also subject to public speaking, and we do have speakers this time, so can I invite the objector, Ms Long, to come down and speak? Ms Long, you have three minutes.
Just to confirm, I'm not objecting, I'm supporting.
I do apologise, I have you down as an objector on my notes.
I'm the agent for the applicant. Good evening, I'm here tonight to speak...
Could you hold on a second, please?
Apologies, so we follow the correct procedure. Objector can speak first, please. Apologies for that.
Right, is this Ms Axon?
Pisani.
You have three minutes to speak, from the moment you start to speak.
Thank you. Good evening, sir. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I represent seventeen of the neighbours who lodged objections. We opposed the previous three-house scheme on the grounds of overdevelopment. Logically, we therefore oppose the increase. We are still bewildered how the Appeal Inspector disagreed with you about its suitability. Now that he has condoned garden grabbing, this stretch of leafy Hindhead will soon be history. When Grassmere was sold at the beginning as a building plot in nineteen sixty, it was protected by restrictive covenants. They limit Grassmere to a single detached dwelling. I live at Sowston Court, which is a beneficiary of those covenants. We have taken advice from a barrister with special interest in this subject, and he has no doubt that they are still valid. On the third of January, we wrote to the head of planning, but there has been no reply to this. But we heard on the grapevine that covenants are considered to be a private dispute. That may be so, but it seems to leave the council rather exposed, and should they be spending so much public money processing multiple planning applications for a single site without such checks? Four houses are said to be acceptable because the built form doesn't change. However, the impact on amenity and parking space will be huge. Plot sizes for the three-house scheme were already small. Now the limited space has to work thirty-three per cent harder. We realise that Waverley has to meet housing targets, but the local community feels very let down that Hindhead Crossroads have not been redeveloped in the sympathetic way promised to us following the opening of the tunnel. Instead, flats and houses are being shoehorned into every nook and cranny. The trade-off should be protected for the remaining leafy gateway to Hindhead. We hope that you will reject this re-application. Thank you very much indeed.
Thank you very much. Now let's try Ms Long.
Good evening, members. I'm here to speak in support of the application. We believe the scheme presents the opportunity to build four much-needed houses in a sustainable location of the borough. Council officers agree with the proposal and recommend approval. In reaching their decision, we'd like to draw some, your attention to important points. The previous application for a semi-detached pair and a detached dwelling was approved... The previous application for a semi-detached pair in a detached dwelling was approved at appeal, as the inspector found the development to be appropriate by virtue of scale, density and layout. It is the case that the proposal for the two semi-detached pairs will have no greater impact on this part of Hindhead than that already approved. This is principally for three reasons. There will be no material increase in bulk with only seven square metres increase in floor area. The built frontage of the dwellings, as viewed from the highway, will remain the same, as the new semi-detached pair will have the appearance of the detached dwelling already approved, and the distance to boundaries and distance to highway have not been significantly changed. The principle of the development has been established by the previous appeal, and the location of the site within the settlement boundary is acceptable. The net gain of four dwellings will make a much-needed contribution to housing's need in the borough. The density of the proposed dwellings is comparable to the surrounding area, as noted by the appeal inspector, and the proposal does not represent overdevelopment. These points were supported by the inspector's previous appeal decision, which concluded the surrounding area is mixed in character and density. In designing the houses, reference was made to the Hazelmead Design Statement and Design Guidelines for Hindhead to ensure the appearance is sympathetic to the area. In addition, there will be new tree planting to the site frontage. There's been no objection from County Highway Authority who agree with parking arrangements. And most importantly, there'll be no greater impact on any residential neighbouring amenity. Neighbours won't be affected by the increase from three to four units, given that the access is directly onto the public highway. And in fact, we will be closing the existing access which is shared with Thurston Court, and we believe this will be a benefit to the residents in that area. Accordingly, officers have recommended approval. We'd like to take these points to be taken into consideration in reaching a decision. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Members, councillor Ishwood.
Thank you, Chairman. When we looked at the last application, we rejected it. The inspector approved it. This one is six or maybe seven square metres greater, therefore I don't have a problem with that. Do make a comment, and these are comments, that we put conditions on the development. The roof came off before. I was aware that the condition on bat surveys had been completed. Point number one. The road access, fine. I sat there for some time yesterday trying to get out of Thurston Court, four o'clock in the afternoon. Let me tell you that after some time waiting, I then timed it another two and a half minutes before I could get on the road. So, you know, highways don't always get it right. It is going to be a problem right opposite Tower Road, but there we are. Mr Elsmore normally builds delightful houses, most attractive. I find these bland and uninteresting in every way, and that's my opinion. We asked that the developers used their car parking deliveries on-site. It would appear that they start to use the entrance to the Golden Valley for some of their work. This afternoon, they were parked on the site, two of them. The site's already been levelled, and it would appear that the trenches are already being built. I do find that a little unusual. I would have thought they would have waited for planning permission to be granted. They didn't. Other trees have been removed, and it makes a nonsense of the proposed view from the road which is, it seems to be viewed from the wrong end of a telescope. But the trenches have been dug, that's a fact. And I just worry that with the other developments going on in that immediate area, that parking is a problem. The 287 is a throughway, therefore no parking on that, and the Tower Road residents, let me assure you, are mighty fed up with developers, so I hope that they respect the local people. The covenants have been raised, and I know that the planning authority have replied to Thurston Court's company. It is a matter that was raised with the developers some time ago. I'm surprised it's taken so long for them to get back. And could I just make a plea that where the driveway goes onto the road that Surrey highways or the developers actually seal the junction between the hog-in and the roadway, because with the heavy lorries going in and out continually, that's going to break the road up, and we don't need any more of that. But I will support the scheme, but I do find it bland and uninteresting, and I would like to know where conditions are actually placed, that they are observed.
Officers want to make a comment on that.
With regards to the starting works on-site and also with regards to the bats, our enforcement team have looked at the matter and they are happy that they haven't done anything wrong at this stage. The bat survey, the condition has been discharged, and they have followed it out, and they haven't actually erected anything on-site as of yet.
Councillor Edwards.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, I objected to this on the previous application, and of course it was wanted at appeal. So there's nowhere to go as far as that is concerned. But I actually agree with councillor Ishwood. I think Mr Elsmore does build very nice homes, and I think with a little more imagination we can improve the look of these homes substantially at very little cost. I think back to Thakem Homes up in Hindhead and what they've done, and Linden Homes. So I think if he could, it would be appreciated, but I'm afraid we're going to have to support this application because we've got no real way to go, from what I gather from the officers. So I'm disappointed, but there we are.
Councillor Adams.
Really, just a minor point. I do note that there's going to be considerable hard standing in front of these houses now, and I hope that it will be actually permeable hard standing so that none of the water runs off down into the road.
We have a landscaping condition, so we can add details of the hard standing to go within that full details of the landscaping.
Councillors, any further comments? No, in which case we'll move on to the recommendation, which is on page 156. Subject to the views of Natural England, permission be granted, subject to conditions one to fifteen, noted on pages 156 to 159, and the one informative noted on page 160. And...
Chairman, we're modifying a condition?
Yes, and the modification of the condition related to landscaping. Can I have those in favour of the recommendation to grant?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
And those against? Any abstentions?
One.
Thank you very much. That is agreed. That brings us to the end of the planning applications. I just remind you that we skipped over items six and seven, so we've still got those to deal with. Item six, the quarterly appeals report. Paul Harwick to introduce.
Thank you, Chairman. Members, we'll see that there are three decisions for the quarter, and you'll see that all three decisions were dismissed at appeal. And the first decision at Mill House Farm, Chittingfold, new access and driveway, the main issue is related to impact on the greenbelt and the landscape, whether actually there was actually reasonable grounds for the access to serve the agricultural function of the farm. You'll see that the inspector agreed with the council on all grounds and considered it to be harmful development. The second decision was Woodlands Lodge, installation of roof lights and alterations to allow conversion of roof into habitable accommodation. You see, the main issue there was the likely impact on the living conditions of the occupiers of Greencroft, and you'll see that the inspector agreed with the planning committee that there would be harm caused by the installation of those roof lights. The third decision was for an infill plot in Forestdale, Hindhead. You'll see that this was actually a late notification from the inspector to the council. Although it came in July, we obviously chased it and included it in this quarterly report. You'll see the main issues are impact on the street scene, character of the area, the living conditions of a property next door, and living conditions for the future occupiers of the proposed dwelling. And again, you'll see the inspector supported the council on the first two grounds, but did consider that it would satisfy the living conditions for the proposed dwelling. Happy to answer any questions, Chairman.
Are there any questions or comments? Councillor Adams.
Yes, I'd like to congratulate the planning department on being so accurate with their suggestions in respect of granting and refusing applications, and I'd also like to thank them for supporting the committee so well when we refuse an application with the right suggestions to get that refusal accepted by an appeal.
Any other comments? No, can we move on to the recommendation then, please? Set on the first page of the agenda that the appeals report be noted. Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you very much. Quarterly enforcement reports.
Sorry, it's Beth.
No, I'm doing well with my notes. Beth, I'm terribly sorry. I said Beth at the beginning of the meeting, and I got prompted with Victoria. I'm going to sack the secretary.
Thank you, Chairman. This report provides members with an update on progress of the planning enforcement service for quarter three, last year, October to December. If I take you directly to the site-specific updates on page 17, just by way of further updates. Northside, we are continuing to work very closely with the owner, and we are nearing complete compliance with the notice, which is good news. Land at Winterton Arms, following the further site visit where we saw the situation slightly changed, we have assessed the expedience of prosecution, and we do think it's expedient to prosecute on this matter, and all the statements and evidence will be prepared as such. If I take you then to page 18, you'll note that up table one, we continue to stay below the 250 cases on hand target. The dip in both the cases received and closed, I think, can be fairly a portion to the Christmas break. We're continuing, as you can see at table three, to meet our local performance indicator. And I think that takes me to the end, Chairman, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Councillor Mitchell.
Thank you, Chairman. The land beside the Winterton Arms. I had a phone call from somebody in your department about two months ago to tell me that you were contemplating prosecution, and did I agree with it? And I said yes, bring it on as quick as possible. I'm surprised that two months later we're still contemplating it. There has, by the way, been a little bit of activity on the site in the last two days, but he doesn't seem to be removing things, and the sign on the gate advertising a retail business is still there.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, I'm aware of the conversation that you had with officers. We had embarked on some what looked to be quite promising discussions with the land owner, but unfortunately they amounted to nothing. So in the interest of being reasonable, we decided to hold off, but because they proved fruitless, we will be pressing ahead without further delay.
I could have told you they'd be fruitless.
It's always a good delaying tactic though, isn't it? Any further comments? No, can we move on to the recommendation then? Set out on the first page of the agenda, the enforcement report being noted. Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Okay, thank you. There are no items to consider in exempt session, so that concludes the meeting this evening. Thank you, members. Thank you, officers. Bit of a mammoth session today, although a bit of deja vu on, I think, on every item.